Okay, it's seven o'clock. We call a regular meeting of the Buchanan City Council. I order asking you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Guest, Classic Wheels Car Club Block Party, Jerry Kimball.
As you all know, I think you even know, to begin with, Mr. Mayor, thank you, this councilman and councilmen and ladies and gentlemen. Jerry Kimball, I'm here to talk on behalf of the Classic Wheels Car Club. Everything seems to be coming along fairly good right now, and I want to thank the city for everything that they've done so far and for the things that's happened here in the future. We think we're going to have a good show and good attendance. I just, I wanted to thank you all. I mean, everything is, it seems like it's going so smooth and way, way better than last year. I mean, we had a rough time last year. It was the first time that we didn't know a lot of things about what was going on. And I really appreciate what you've done for us. And as you all know, we try to raise this money to pay our bills, and then after our bills are paid, the money that we have left over goes to charities. And we try to keep it all local if we can. I mean, there's people in Lewis County that need help too, and Randolph, Raxton, and people come from these counties and help us out. Also, the guys from Summer Nights Car Club in Weston, they're coming over to help us put this show on. And, but anyhow, the monies that are left over, we put that money towards baby seats for newborns, parents that can't afford baby seats. And we also go along with the hospital auxiliary and loads, and we buy smoke detectors. And one of those goes home with every newborn. And after that, anybody that has a child that needs treatment at WVU, Pittsburgh, anywhere, that they have to travel to take that child to, we try to help them out too. And with the monies for gasoline or something to that effect. And also, we've had families that their homes have burned that we've tried to help. I mean, we can't replace a home, but we, at least we can buy them some food or things like that, and pay a little bill or gas bill, but it's all about helping. Also, I want to ask anybody that wants to volunteer and help us, if whether it's serving pancakes at CJ Maggie's on Saturday morning, or if it's parking some cars during the day. I know, I'm hoping it's going to be warm, but I'd like to see the temperature drop a little bit. I don't want any rain, of course, none of us do. If you want to help in any way, let us know. We're having a committee meeting this coming Tuesday night down at Jawbone Park, and trying to see what we need to do and get everybody that's volunteering to get with us down there on Tuesday night at six o'clock. So, I don't know, Rick, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I got something to say.
I'll turn to other man.
Here's the tickets. Anybody needs tickets for that pancake feed, we need the monies. A lot of little children are going to benefit from this by the end of this year and even before that time. We've got a lot of things going on. Most everything that we're doing, the car club is responsible for, is free of charge. So those families can come to town, bring a dozen kids if they want to, unless they buy something, food, or something from one of the vendors, it's not going to cost anything. We're doing it all for free. There's registration for the cars, obviously. We've got to, we've got to get a little money for that to help pay for some of the expenses. But outside of that, we're trying to keep this thing as close as we can to being free for the community, and hopefully that there will be some good fun involved in it. Sneak preview, here's the official T-shirt. Not a very good model, but that's, that's the T-shirt. So come down, buy a T-shirt anyway. We've got something left from last year. If you're too cheap to buy the new one, so they'll be half price. But no, we do want to thank the city, everybody, the street department, Matt Gregory, he's going to, he's going to throw all the bums out. We're going, we're going to have a good time, and we're going to make it good, clean, fun. Buchanan needs more of this, and the businesses up and down the highway here ought to really appreciate what we're doing because we're bringing a lot of people to town.
What's the date of the show?
Twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh.
Next week.
July, yeah. It's going to be Friday night from about five o'clock on to eleven o'clock, probably. Most of the entertainment will be down at Jawbone. And then Saturday, we start with the pancake feed in the morning. We'd like to see you all there with a five dollar bill. And, and that's over at about ten o'clock. A lot of the registered cars will be going out to the game farm for a free barbecue that we're doing out there. They come back from there, hopefully Matt will have the street cleared, and we'll start parking the cars on the street at about three o'clock. And from then on, it's party, party all night. So we're going to have a good time. Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh.
Wait, wait until tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll be a nervous wreck by then. All right, thank you.
I think you got a couple of sales up here.
Yeah, let me have a ticket for the pancake.
Take your plate for yourself.
My wife's out of town. If she knew you were wanting to take somebody else, oh, she might know.
I know you're going to be out of town, so I don't buy a ticket.
You got fifteen bucks, sir?
I don't know.
Where can you get?
We're only going to buy fourteen for that.
Got fourteen.
I don't know. There you go.
That's close enough.
Is that there?
Forty-five, thank you.
You beat the mayor.
Where can we get the tickets later?
They'll be, they'll be for sale at the door at eight o'clock. So come and, if you're not eating, we'll put you to work.
Kenny, I think he can sell my bail right there.
I am a salesman from nothing else.
No, I use fridge ragers too. Do you get the reporters?
I want to give this girl one up because she does such a good article for me.
Oh, no.
I'll tell you what, read that in the paper. Isn't that outstanding?
Yes, I did.
My article was no good.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department Board Report, Michael. Yes, a couple items this evening. You have in front of you Resolution 2013-09. This is the budget resolution for general fund for the fiscal year, thirteen, fourteen, current fiscal year that we're on. This is something that is prescribed by the state auditor that we have to do by the end of July of each fiscal year. This is basically, nothing has changed except for the information that we had talked about in our special council session last week and then the original council session that we had at the beginning of the month. All of those monies have been appropriated. We had to do this because of our unsigned fund balance, to assign those monies. This also does include paying off three of the police cruisers, the thirteenth group, the 2013 police cruisers, and paying off some of that debt as well. So, nothing has changed since our special meeting, and it's up for council for consideration. We'll need a roll call.
Motion to approve Resolution 2013-09.
I move.
Second. And seconded. All in favor, we'll respond to the roll call. Tom?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mayor?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Couple of other items included in your packet tonight are two proposed additions to the employee handbook in the form of policy. One is a motor vehicle record evaluation policy. Basically, this is, both of these are at the advice of our insurance providers in addressing some issues of motor vehicle incidents that have occurred specifically in the last several years, taking some stuff into consideration to help control and help employees understand what is acceptable or poor driving records when they're operating city vehicles. I would like for you all to take a look at that policy. Mr. McCully is not here tonight. I'll give him a copy of this policy as well, to see if there are any legal changes. Give these also to department heads, should be in their box spot tomorrow for them to, to consider and look over. Any changes between now and then, either from council or input from department heads, or any legal changes will be noted at the next council meeting will be up for consideration. The next portion of the policy for the handbook is an additional policy added called a Return to Work Program. Within this program is a policy stating the criteria for employees returning back to work for workers' comp for any injuries that they suffered while employed with the city of Buchanan or during employment with the city of Buchanan. We had a meeting last week with a representative from Brick Street, which gave us some pretty eye-opening statistics, along with our department heads. We discovered we do not have an official return to work policy. It is to the city of Buchanan's advantage, as well as Brick Street's, and, and more importantly, to our employees, to get them off of workers' comp as quickly as possible, providing they're healthy, of course, and through a doctor's recommendation. Obviously, it's beneficial to Brick Street and city of Buchanan, because the further and the longest that they are on workers' comp, that does have an effect on the formula when calculating our rate renewal. It's very important for the employee because workers' comp only pays roughly sixty-six percent of their pay. So it's, I don't know who can take a thirty-three percent pay cut, but it's also in their advantage to get back to work. We, within the policy declares exactly that they would need to be signed up by a physician, and the physician would need to indicate exactly how long that, or what they could work. And certainly, there's a lot of miscellaneous work that we can have these employees do so that they can receive a paycheck and it doesn't adversely affect our workers' comp. With all of that said, please encourage you all again, take a look at this. If you have any feedback, I'm a phone call away. We'll stop by the office for some of you, and be giving this to our employees tomorrow, and also Mr. McCully for his review, and hope to have this in front of you for the August, what, is that first, second, whatever, first meeting in August, how's that, for consideration and approval. Other than that, just want to remind you all that the West Virginia Municipal League has their, their meeting, their annual conference coming up, I think it's August the seventh, eighth, ninth. Pay close attention to August eighth. They're devoting an entire day to Home Rule. Gave a presentation to you all a little over a month, month and a half ago on Home Rule. If we're going to be a Home Rule municipality, we need to have our application in by next year. There's a lot of work that needs to go into that. Probably going to have some meetings to talk about how we want to approach Home Rule and what we want to get out of Home Rule as part of our application. So, pretty much, again, a whole day devoted to that. I'll be down there. So I look forward to seeing some of you down there. We can all get even more educated on Home Rule as we determine whether it's something we want to pursue further or not. So that's all I have. Probably will have something maybe on it later on in the meeting, but at this point, that's my report.
Questions for Michael. Chief?
Hey. A few things to, to have the police departments. As you all know, we recently interviewed police candidates, prospective police candidates for the two vacancies that we have had in the police department, and police have announced that the selection of Marshall O'Connor and Joshua Wilson to fill these vacancies. Both of these individuals have been contacted. We have been working with them, due in large part to the application deadline for the police academy being July twenty-sixth. We've been working diligently with them this week to get their application filled out. And of course, the largest part of that application is the medical physical. So they have been getting that finished. I have one application that is complete, and I expect the other one to be complete, either by the end of this week or the beginning of next. And of course, we'll be getting those out to Charleston expeditiously. Both of these gentlemen are scheduled to begin work with the city on July twenty-ninth. They will be working the day shift of the week with myself and Lieutenant Mountain for orientation. They'll be with us for about four weeks before the academy begins. We're really, got our fingers crossed that we can get them in with this academy. Knowing ahead of time, the date for the academy, we did send a request for two reservations to the academy. Of course, we're not guaranteed anything, but we did at least get our name in the app, and they know we're coming. And that's been there for at least a month now. So we got our fingers crossed that they will honor those reservation requests, and we can get both of them in the academy, which will begin August twenty-sixth. Their training should last about sixteen weeks, and we anticipate their graduation being December thirteenth. Once that occurs, they'll be going to a field training program for approximately sixteen more weeks, where we take basically what they learned and apply it in the field under experienced officers. So the ball is rolling forward, and that's, that's where we're at now with that. This next thing I'm very pleased to announce, and of course, you've heard me talk about this leading up to the event itself, and that's the first ever Buchanan Police Department Youth Police Academy. That academy began this week. We are running two camps. The camp this week is for middle school age students. It is a day camp type format. It began on Monday of this week, and this session will end tomorrow. The students meet each morning at nine AM and conclude at noon each of these days. And so we've really introduced the students to a host of activities, really given them a unique opportunity to get to know our officers, several of our officers, to get to see police work on a firsthand basis. As I said, this is the, this week is the middle school age students, and we have twenty middle school age, middle school age students with us this week. And the week began with a tour of city hall and the police department, demonstrations of the various pieces of equipment that we use. Tuesday was a hands-on day. Of course, it was one of the hottest days of the week. We were outside all day. But we did manage to find several shady spots down by the public safety complex. We had an accident scene set up for them, mock accident scene, for them to investigate. So we showed them how to measure accidents, how to document and diagram accidents. And at the same time, we were rotating another group through mock traffic stops. So the students actually got to be inside the police car. They were riding with one of our officers. The perpetrator, the traffic violator, I guess if you want to call him, was one of our interns, Sean Coonratt from Westman College, who's with us this summer. We were, we pulled him over twenty times. He got twenty tickets that day. So maybe a couple more. Actually, I think the students had the opportunity to, they rode along with the officers, and they initiated the lights and the siren, and the officer got them out and walked them through how we conduct the traffic stop. And then they, we had a radio sent over to a tactical private channel. So they had the opportunity to actually learn how to talk on the radio and use the phonetic alphabet military time like we use, and calling his license to the quote-unquote comm center, which was Doug Mountain standing with a portable radio in the shade with the rest of the group as they observed. And so I told Doug just to fix it up when they called his license in. Sometimes he'd be, he'd be good to go. Other times, he was suspended. I think one time he was wanted for robbery, and so he was in terrible trouble that day. So we showed him a variety of things concerning traffic stops. Wednesday, we had a special presentation by a gentleman by the name of Chris El Greco from the FBI Center, who gave them a presentation about internet and social media safety. Very good educational program that he put on. Today, we walked them through evidence processing, fingerprinting. We allow them to take ink fingerprints of themselves, so they have their own set of fingerprints that they're able to take home with them. We walked through DOI investigation, and they got a real kick out of me and Lieutenant Mountain field testing ourselves with the drunk always on. So, you know, it was, this is a great opportunity to really get to know the kids. And I've seen each day as we've progressed through this, they've really warmed up to us more and more. You know, I'm to the point now, I know each of them by first name, and on breaks, they come up and instead of in their own little huddle, they come up and huddle around us and ask us questions, even at break time. So it's just a wonderful opportunity that we have with our area youth and really getting to know them, give them a fun, safe, and a free alternative. All of this has been free. Tomorrow, we'll accommodate the academy, and it ends in a mock crime scene. So as, as often happens with a lot of our activities that we do at the community council, Chambers turns into a crime scene tomorrow. So this has kind of been a dangerous place from our various academies in the past. So we're going to have a crime scene set up here tomorrow. We're going to walk them through how to, how to process that, and we'll end with a little graduation ceremony where everybody will get a certificate. The students have also received backpacks. Inside their backpacks were water bottles and flashlights. All of that was made possible by a State Palestine School grant. And in addition to their certificates tomorrow, they're each going to get an academy T-shirt, and that was made possible by a donation by the Fraternal Order of Police. So, you know, we've been able to get monies from various locations, and again, keep this a free opportunity for our area youth. A lot of fun activities and a lot of things, some souvenir type things that they get to take with them. Next week, following the same format, Monday through Friday, will be the high school age students. And we've got about thirteen or fourteen high school age students signed up for that class. So we look forward to spending time with them and getting to know them, just like we have the middle school age students next week. The last event that we're gearing up for, in fact, we go from the youth academy in the morning to meetings on this in the afternoon, and that's the National Night Out. National Night Out has been an annual event that we participated in for the last eight or nine years now. This year, it's going to be on August sixth. It's always the first Tuesday in August. This year, it happens to be August sixth, from six to ten PM. Following up on the last couple of years, where we've seen a lot of, a lot of good turnout, a lot of success, we're going to have this, this event this year at the High School Pool. And so again, this will be a free event to the community. Families will get to come out and swim. We're going to have music entertainment by a DJ, and door prizes will be offered. And of course, I think you guys are loving that too. Yeah, we have a, for the last several years, we've had a car show as part of our National Night Out event, and we call it the Cops and Rotters.
Cops and Rotters.
It's, we're talking about, did you guys come out there? Was that Doug's thing?
Yeah, that's Doug.
Okay, yeah, he got, he calls it the Cops and Rotters event. So that runs simultaneous. It's another activity too that goes along with the event, and another, just an opportunity to come out, get to know the police officers, get to know the public safety personnel, and learn about the services that are available to the community. And so again, we're geared up for that. That'll be August sixth, six to ten PM. And that's all I have. Unless there are questions.
Matt, the new hires, if they can't get in the police academy this time, we still yet go ahead and hire them and get them working?
Right, yeah. In the past, you know, luckily, over the last few years, we've been able to see a pretty quick turnaround as far as getting them on board and right into the academy. We've had a lot of success with that, with our last several hires. I know when I was first hired, I was hired at one in January, and I didn't go to the academy until August. So I was supposed to go in April that year I was hired, but there's, there was a waiting list, again, because the State Police Academy is the only academy in West Virginia, so everybody trains there. We've just been lucky to manage, you know, a quick turnaround over the last several years getting recruits in there. But sometimes it can, you can see a backlog there, be put on a waiting list, and we're hoping that doesn't happen this round. If it does, and again, the rush to get the paperwork in by July twenty-sixth for this August twenty-sixth start date was because that's the last academy of this year. The next one won't be offered until January twenty-fourteen.
Any other questions for Matt?
Matt, I did peek in the door a few times while your classes were going on, and there was definite enthusiasm in this room. It was, it was fun to watch the kids get excited. How we was doing, thoroughly enjoyed it.
I think it's a great thing. I think that when people say there's nothing for their kids to do during the summertime, then they obviously don't read the newspapers, listen to the news, or, or watch us on, on council night. Twenty people could have very easily been forty or forty-five too. So there are things for the kids to do out there, and it's supposed to, it's free. This is free, the forensic Mondays classes are free. There, there's just a world of opportunities for kids to do something here in this county. They're just not taking it very tough. So thank you for what you do, for what the department does. And I hope that continue to, to see as I did when working the DOI checkpoint when Doug Law was out there and the several people that came through checkpoint, the little kid said, "I know you, I know you, you were at our school." That's a good thing.
Absolutely. I would be remiss to if we didn't say, and I meant to say this as I was giving the report on the each of the day's activities. One of the special presenters today was Mary Alba from the American Legion. She came and gave an absolutely wonderful presentation to the children on citizenship and what it means to be a good citizen. And one of the coolest activities I've seen so far this week, she had them break down into small groups and answer questions such as, what does it mean to be a leader? What does it mean to be, what does patriotism mean to you? What does a good citizen do? And the answers that these kids came up with just absolutely astounded us all, to the point she's going to take them and share them at the next meeting at the American Legion with all the veterans. So I was very pleased.
Mary does a great job.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Ma'am?
The sanitary board did meet this afternoon. Major part of our discussion continues to be the NPDs permit. We had a rather difficult turn during the last month. We had met with DEP, presented information, and we were very encouraged, very, very optimistic relative to that. Had a conference call with them later in June. They, they were a little reluctant. Had some correspondence, another conference call, and they didn't seem to want to accept the information that we had presented and countered with a plan of activities for us to do more work, gather more data. But the call appeared to be pretty friendly, cooperative. They were, they seemed to be looking for a way to help us. They followed that up with a letter, and the letter was much harsher in tone and seems to be a series of targets that keep moving out further and further in front of us. We've had a meeting scheduled for next week, almost ever since our meeting in early June. And we're preparing to go, to go to that meeting with our... to go, to go to that meeting with, with our technical support people and maybe even some of our representative support.
Legislators.
Legislators, yes. And there, there are technical aspects of this, and we think that we've provided answers that satisfactorily address the issues. But overriding is the financial aspect. Our concern that a very major cost would result in very minimal benefit. We have a lot of concerns about putting our community through that, that kind of condition. We had a DEP inspection this week, and it, it went very well. Plan is in good shape, performing very well for the parameters that we're attempting to address now, that these matters of concern are in the future. Our line crew has completed the storm sewer work on Pocahontas Street. We also had a couple, we thought we were gonna get away from Pocahontas and Fayette, and then we had a series of complaints on Pocahontas and Fayette. Spent another couple of weeks working there. But a little bit further down the street, we've been working on some renovations. And I've reported this before at the Elias Street Pump Station, those renovations have been completed. We're preparing for some other line work. We have mobilized at the site of the new armory and are going to build a short sewer extension to provide service there. We have a couple of developments, North Ridge and out at the old Burton Phillips Dairy property. And particularly, a, an extension that will cause, across the Buchanan Housing Authority site. We've been working on preparing for those activities. Together, they will be quite a bit of work, and, and we have been advised that the people who are seeking these sewer extensions intend to have facilities, facilities developed so that they will be in use before the end of the year, which appears to us to be pretty ambitious, but we're, we're doing what we can to satisfy that. I reported last time that in order to help address this extra work, we were planning to hire another person. And, and that process is, is ongoing. And we expect very soon to make an additional hire. That's all.
Questions for Sam?
Thank you, Sam.
Tom or Kelly? It's Kelly's turn. All right.
Try to keep it as short and brief as you can. First thing I was gonna mention is that, as you know, we've been trying to develop more and more on the boil water advisories. And a lot of them, we haven't really went on TV with because they've been twenty-five people or less that have been able to isolate valves. At some point in time, it will go and the worm will have to, depending on the leak and the valvings at the time. But for now, we had door hangers that basically would just say your water's off for non-pay mode or different items like that. So we developed something more like this that might get their attention. And it basically tells them that you're under a boil water advisory and the date and time it's been issued, a checkbox, and then another checkbox when it's been lifted. Because a lot of times, you can't find people home and do go door to doors. But if you see something like that, then you know, basically, you might be under boil water. And for all some other things, we've had three leaks this past month of June, Pocahontas Street, one in South Florida, and one at Parkwood. Of course, the biggest job we're working right now is the armory line. The month of July, I know Jay's probably touched upon this too, it's been real wet. We have a total of like six hundred feet late. But I'm happy to report we are through the auction property out there where they have the wrecked cars. The past week, we have proceeded. We've got through the Andrews property, got a high lift set. We're almost through the property at Southern Baptist Church there. The conditions are not ideals yet. We've got two track hoes there and going through parts of it, we're actually shoving mud with the body of the hoe just to get through two tri-lane pipes. So that just gives you some idea of the conditions that they're working in to try to get the line made. But you know, it's not gonna get that much better in that area that we're in. So we're trying to do it in a timely manner when the weather permits. The other things we've had going on is we had to replace a pump at Tenerife Pump Station. It's a 350 gallon a minute pump. It's given us some issues as far as leakage. And we tore that, we tore it down and replaced the parts inside. It's up and running. We received the last shipment of pipe for the armory job. So everything is there just to be put in. We've also been working on some extensions, Leggett Edition. Mr. Fado signed up for one, which involved four services and roughly 220 foot of pipe. I reported in board meeting there last week that we were starting on that. Today, we made the last service. We just gotta go back and do some seeding and mashing. We also worked on fire service, which was at Randolph, on Randolph Street at the new church. That was sort of a major undertaking too, because we had to tap the 24-inch main and provided 4-inch fire service, which we've done about six to seven feet deep. And then have 45 it up to get the elevation they need. And as Sam talked about North Ridge, we also are involved in it a little bit. We're probably be making taps on either side of the buildings that's gonna be erected there. And that way, we'll have a loop around the backside and can give them service and whatever they need. Would like to report, we installed radio read meters at Mud Lake. I'm pleased with, what we're trying to do is put them in problem areas. I know it may not seem like problem areas, but when you're reading meters and you're in and out of the truck, hinges on the truck, the truck, the meter reader, and it was like thirty meters, but it saves almost an hour of reading. And we also have installed radio read meters in a lot of our commercial places because it's getting harder and harder to get in these places because of security. To give you an idea of where the Old Moore's building is, that could take up to an hour to get in there just to read the meter. You go in, you present who you are, and then they say, wait. And then that's the kind of issue we deal with that. So in installing these, we're saving little bits of time. And eventually, we may gain a few days where we can use in one of the projects. On Tom's side, he has an operator that is attending Class II course at Environmental Training Center. And most of his, he said, been routine. That's about all I have. Questions?
Thank you, Kelly.
Tell me, have they decided yet out at North Ridge what they're gonna do about the lines there?
Well, I got, talked to Jay on Monday because he'd been on vacation. And it's been conversation going through email, him email me, and then through the developers. And right now, we're, I go with parts for six inch. So no six and two, just a six clear out.
Good deal.
Good question. Rich?
I'd just like to bring an item to council members' attention. You're used to receiving every month up here a list or a stack of bills. I just grabbed a few of them back there. With the blue sheets on them and attached invoices and so on. I wanna call your attention in your packet, there's about two and a half pages right after the handbook tear, right near the front pages back, that lists the same information. This is, we're able to do this with the new Tyler system. Actually, we have to make this list anyhow to be available to the public if anybody wants to come in. Typically, don't give them a copy of the invoices themselves. My question to you, because it does take quite a bit of time to put these together in a form that you can see the way it is. Would this list be sufficient? You don't have to give me a decision right now, if you want to, I can. But you know, is this list sufficient for you to review? Because you do need to, to review and approve the bills. We don't need your initials on each bill. That's, that's not a requirement. The only requirement is actually that you pass a motion to approve the bills. But the question is whether this would be sufficient, or do you wanna continue with the stack of, of individual invoices with the attached blue documents?
I assume that the individual invoices will remain available.
Sure. Do you have any question on any line item we can produce? The bill, it would just mean pulling that one out versus getting them all.
Yeah, I mean, I like the list. I think it's a fine thing to do for us to pay from. But, but the, some of the times, there are notations made on the particular invoices and on the purchase orders that accompany these bills. And I'm just thinking of one for tonight where I'm not sure it was ever answered, but there was a question on one from the, one of the kids' activities that they have that they're stock at youth. That they'd gone to Walmart, and one of the purchases on there was cold medicine. You know, and Ambie or somebody caught that and questioned what that was for. Sometimes it isn't caught, but I guess it was for an experiment they were doing in a science class. But there are little items like that that I occasionally find that, that I don't think is, is completely the way it should be. So I do like to look at those bills. So as far as I am concerned, I, you know, if nobody else wants to look at them, fine. I still like to go through them just to see what they are. Because I've caught a few on there before that needed corrections made to them.
Well, typically, if there's any notation, it's already on the, I mean, Ambie's gonna catch them. I will note that I put on, on this list today, I just looked down through it. There were a couple of significant items, 28,605, 31,230 in the middle of the second page. And I just asked Ambie, what's that for? Because I figured somebody would ask, and those are materials, light posts and globes for the Gateway East project. So I mean, you know, it's just a question. This list has to be produced anyhow. If this is sufficient, then we'll stop doing the other. If you want the other, fine. And like I say, you don't have to tell me the night if you don't want to. What, any other questions on that?
We're spending, you know, a chunk of money to have somebody sit there and put all those, coordinate all of these and put all those bills together. If that's what you want.
It's as bad as the train going by.
When this summer is going on.
Two Amess's emergency truck.
Anything else, Rich?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. McCauley, do you have anything to give him?
No.
But he, he sent an email with two notes, just, I think he just reached, forget who he was or something. Yeah. Who has that? You have it? Michael have it?
It's nothing as significant as, really.
Typical one.
Not the damn Dave, but you see the, the letter about the monument?
Yes.
Yes, but he hasn't. It hadn't been finalized yet, so it's not ready. Okay, all right. Okay, moving right along. DOI's letter regarding McDonald's turn lane and Bush's. Y'all have a copy of that for your review. It's nothing we need to act on or do anything about, just to, you know, what's, what's happening. Okay? Consent agenda is the approval minutes of regular meeting July 2nd, the special mid-emergency meeting July 8th, billing and wiring permits, payment of the bills, and approval of Mid-State Soccer Club to use at the Pocahontas Park. Most approval consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
In second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. As have it. Segment final reading of ordinance number 376, which is the first responder. Ordinance. And I think the copy is in there.
Yes.
Recall that this ordinance number 376 of the City of Buchanan and ordinance one requiring all public safety personnel, that is, police officers and firefighters hired to the City of Buchanan, following the effectuation date of this ordinance, to reside within ten linear miles of the City of Buchanan's public safety complex. Two, grandfather in certain situations, current public safety personnel from application of this ordinance. And three, providing for grace parade for relocation of all newly hired public safety personnel to file for these here. I think Dave would say it's, this ordinance is ready for your passing. I'd entertain a motion to pass ordinance number 376 of the City of Buchanan on the second reading.
Motion made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Every employee that this affects, I'm assuming is on notice about this new ordinance.
All the current employees meet the requirement. And we notified all of the three candidates for a potential opening for the fire department. They have all responded that they wanna remain on the list. They were given a copy of the ordinance. The, all five candidates that were eligible for the police were advised of the potential passing of the ordinance. The two individuals that have been selected are aware of it. One of them, in fact, does have to move, but he's aware of that and he's in the process of meeting those requirements. So yes, they've all.
He has a year.
Yeah, he has a period of time.
Six months, and then he requested a.
Yes. But he's already in the process.
Right, understand.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Then all in favor, passing ordinance number 376, signify a single saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. As have it. If you turn a little bit, no, gotta go back. It's the last.
It's the last.
Yeah, the last part of your packet is the appointments. And I would like to have you make some changes to what's here. Rich did something by the way. I want to put the waste board appointment on hold for a period of time so that will not be considered here this evening. There's.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put all the board appointments on hold until a later date.
Will we, you have?
At least until the next meeting.
I, I think we should go to executive session, Ken. We're gonna have a short executive session. It's not on the agenda. We will not be making any decisions following. And we won't make any decision on this.
I'll move the table to the end of the meeting.
Most make the table these appointments to the end of the meeting. You mean, we're gonna have to come out of the executive session and make these appointments?
Well.
Let's talk about why we want to.
Let's go talk about why to have the executive session, but I, I would like to.
Okay, I'll, okay, let me, let me back off here. The, I want to make the appointments of the, the top list here, administrator, chief of police, down through.
Stocker.
Stocker youth director.
I move so that we appoint the people top of the list, the department heads and as listed.
So include city attorney?
It does. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify.
Well, I have discussion. I'll, I'll vote for all the supervisor administrative directors with exception of the city attorney. I will not vote for appointing David McCauley. Set down last year, several reasons why. I don't want, need to repeat them publicly, but that's my position.
You know, further consideration, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
We already have a motion and a second, and I think we vote, well, we can back off of that, but okay. What do you say? Let's start over again.
Well, I still think we oughta go into executive.
I think we.
I think we should go into executive session too, because I have a few questions.
There will be a decision made after the executive session. We'll move on. That brings us to comments and announcements. Ron, how do you think?
Comments and announcements, I hope everybody's dealing with the heat as they should be. I haven't seen any fire hydrants that have been opened up like they have in the larger cities. The Upsher County Fair starts tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock and runs through Sunday. Like to see a lot of people show up for the county fair. They've got a lot of good entertainment up here. Matter of fact, Brother Tom over here is going to be picking and grinning tomorrow night.
He can do that there.
Yes, he can. Yes, he can. Just be careful of the heat. If you feel like you're getting overheated, please don't overexert yourselves. We like you too much to have to send flowers to any of you. And God bless and have a good weekend.
Tom?
Nothing really, except to say that I just want to express my appreciation to all the department heads for the great job that's going on. There's so many great things going on in the city, new hires in the police department, excited about them, and think hopefully they'll be a great addition in everything going on with the streets and water and sewer and the improvements that are going on in the armory project. And I don't know if it's worth what you're paying for it, but I appreciate your all's hard work, and thank you.
Rich? Just a couple of things, reminder to residents that the city does require a six-foot fence or enclosure to swimming pools. I've seen several of them up without such enclosure. This is the time of the year when it looks pretty attractive to a young person, and hopefully they can't get into the pool without somebody being around to watch them. Would note that the second week of August, with a number of us gone for municipal aid, that the normally scheduled water board meeting will occur the following Tuesday, August 13th. Normally would be August 8th, but it's delayed because most of us won't be in town. Note that on your schedule. And, you know, I'm just real pleased to see the car club, I think last year when they got done, they kind of wondered, "Are we going to do this again?" Now they're already talking about next year. Must be having fun doing it, but I think it's great to step forward and, you know, other groups do similar kinds of things. Thank you.
Did the junk ordinance go into effect today or tomorrow?
Today or tomorrow.
Before Jerry Kimball, he's want to buy two tickets for the, or Rick. But I also want to say that in regard to Sam, he has been, you know, stressed out over this whole thing with the DEP or the EPA, and I don't know what we can do as council members, mayor, or what, you know, it's unrealistic what they're probably asking for, and I think the, you know, the citizens, the residents, need to start writing the governor and all the people they know in Charleston and say, "Let's get some common sense in what we do in our country today." It's just ridiculous. And, you know, you see it everywhere anymore. We're overregulated tremendously, and it's hurting the country, and it's very sad. Sam, I feel bad for you that you have to go through those hoops all the time. We saw it with Ship Ho, with the Department of Highways and so forth. It's just very frustrating. So it's a train, so, but, best of luck to everybody and have a nice weekend.
I'll take two tickets.
Well, I was going to mention about the ordinance on the pool, because I've been noticing a lot of the pools that are, do not have their. Also, we have several lakes in town that are out that we need to get taken care of.
Jerry's not here, but I understand they have been reported, and they are the ones that the electric company handles, so it's their lack of response, not the city's lack of response.
And I just want to wish the car club another successful year. Hopefully I can make it.
Cupped up.
I might do that.
Yeah, I say ditto to the car club. Appreciate you guys. Any event we can get in town and bring some people in is helping for all of us. I know it's not easy, but I know it gets easier after you get used to doing it. Then you guys get tired of it, and you kick somebody else into it, and they'll have to start over.
Sometimes we get a little over enthusiastic. We go too far, you stop us.
I do appreciate your efforts.
I don't know if we mentioned it or not, but we have asked some of the shop owners to stay open a little later, which will help them out, put up with our noise and.
As I said, there's a couple of reasons now that we would have an executive session. One is personnel, and another is pending litigation that I want to tell you about. So I would entertain a motion to enter into the executive session under 698 for some of personnel and pending litigation. Motion made, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.